Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being a part of this. Appreciate the response. I know it's short notice, but we were getting so many inquiries. Uh, that we thought it would be appropriate to gather anyone who has questions of us. I do have some opening remarks that I'll make. And by way of reminder, I'm Chris Reikdahl, Superintendent Public Schools, State of Washington. I also understand that it looks like Katie is the featured screen still despite me talking here. Um, and I'm not sure I can fix that, but I'll do my best here to do it differently. There we go. Uh, thanks again. Um. The uh. The landscape that we're in is quite dynamic, so I just want to cover three things in sort of descending order, big federal issues. You've heard a lot about them, but but a concise sort of summary of where we are today, I think is helpful. State issues, which does include a little bit of what's going on in the legislature here with respect to budgets. And then how school districts are both responding, and I know some of you have questions about some of the school district responses to the federal stuff. So we'll, we'll take it very quickly in that order here, just high level. There's been such a flurry of executive orders. I want to kind of rip through those really fast where we are and what we've said. Um, immigration, um, by way of reminder, um, the president has essentially cracked down on immigration. He's dissolved the protections that used to be there for students with respect to ICE on. School campuses, churches, hospitals, and places like this. I want to be very clear, to date, we have not seen a case where ICE has gone into a school in the state of Washington. Uh, for any purpose, uh, to talk to or detain a undocumented youth. It's happening in businesses and communities for sure, not at school so far. Our guidance was clear. Students have a legal right to education in this state by being a resident here, not necessarily a citizen. Federal courts have also held, uh, that that is the case across the country, that all students who reside in the U.S. get access to a basic ed. The second was actually what's called a Dear Colleague Letter, so not an executive order. That threatened to take money away from states if they didn't dissolve all their D E I programming. As you probably know, at least three states challenged that and have won in courts. One of them is the state of Washington. Um, and so I think it's important to note that at this point, there's a. A pause on that. Uh, we don't think it's legal at all because Congress has appropriated those dollars and we don't believe the president can withhold them. What we've told school districts is stick with state law, state policy. We have state laws in some cases that actually require D E I, uh, work, whether it's student, uh. Student education or teach. Or school board professional education. So there's certainly. Um, a legal framework for our state to keep leaning into that work. Uh, and again, the courts will settle some of that. The third one was the president declaring that English is the official language of the United States. Again, he does this through executive order. There's no law in Congress that says that. Um, it doesn't change any programming here, so we intend to keep, uh, our programming on dual language. There's nothing districts have to do differently. There's no programming they have to take down. Uh, whether it's helping, uh, students with limited English proficiency using federal dollars ironically. Or state dollars for our dual language, two-way dual language programs, we're leaning into that still. And again, part of our guidance to districts is we have a state law that requires parents and guardians who seek. Some information in their primary language, our state, uh, our state laws say that districts need to provide that. So that's our guidance to districts there. Uh, fourth was the elimination of the U.S. Department of Ed. I know a lot of you will have questions about that. I'll just remind you, the president attempts. Attempted. He thought he was going to send an executive order out to eliminate the Department of Ed. I think they understand they need Congress to do that. The Wall Street Journal did grab that draft order, so it did exist despite some people saying they were never going to do that. There was a draft order from the Wall Street Journal, a published in the Wall Street Journal. What we know is they didn't officially issue that order, and instead they've got new Secretary McMahon, who was confirmed early last week, I believe. She's merely going about slashing so much staff at the U.S. Department of Ed that it in effect is deteriorating the department's ability to carry out its functions as required by Congress and others. Um, they've declared half the staff will be cut ultimately. We've already seen and heard, uh, the Office of Civil Rights. It's one of seventeen offices or programs within the U.S. Department of Ed. They've had half their staff cut. Uh, I would encourage you to read the release from our Attorney General this morning. Um, our Attorney General, uh, joined nineteen or twenty other states. Asking a court to pause those staff firings at the U.S. Department of Ed. They've got legal arguments that they make. Um, I won't make those arguments legally for them. I encourage you to talk to the Attorney General's office. What we have shared with them, though. Is our ability to have a civil rights backstop, uh, at U.S. Ed will be affected by our ability to get service. And if most of the staff are gone, that will be a problem. Uh, there are other problematic things associated with. With eliminating half the staff and de facto wiping out the department, even though Congress hasn't statutorily done that yet. The fifth one is local foods. This is not an executive order. This is a decision at the U.S. Department of Agriculture to cut a program. I believe it's a billion dollars nationwide. It could have that figure wrong. Uh, but it's a multi-year program that allows school districts who who apply and get qualification to purchase local foods from local farmers. It's often supplementing regular school meals with fresh vegetables, fresh fruits, um, even salmon in the case of our state. Uh, we have several districts who are part of that. We can share that with you afterwards. That program will finish out this year, but U.S. Department of Agriculture has cut it off after that. So the subsequent years, uh, will be, uh, null and void unless Congress somehow forces them to spend the money, uh, for that purpose. I think there's a belief that they're allowed to do that. This is one of those rare discretionary programs at Department of Agriculture that Congress didn't put in detail. So perhaps they can do this legally. I am not aware of a legal challenge to that at this point in time. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I don't believe it has total impact on our state for the whole program over three years was about eleven million dollars, a little over eleven million. Now, the big one is an executive order from the president where he essentially tried through executive order to declare that gender will be, uh, basically a function of sex at birth. Most of you are covering this. States like us and Maine and Massachusetts and California and others, uh, they, we've got specific laws that allow us to go beyond the civil rights minimums. Of the federal law. So we've gone beyond Title IX's minimum. And we've said students who identify, um, participate in athletics and activities based on their gender identity. And we have processes for that. It implicates athletics. It's the reason it's so controversial now, though I do want to say. This framework in this state has been in place for eighteen years and until recently. Uh, was not controversial because it's grounded in a real humane policy of student gender identity. It's grounded in laws in this state and non-discrimination laws, um, that make it very, very clear. So our guidance to school districts is. This isn't actually a legal conflict yet. Our state laws control on this. The order does not get to change. Uh, there's no doubt this is going to end up in the courts. We expect that to be the case. Uh, right now, our districts need to be following laws, including our non-discrimination laws, which protect student participation, uh. When gender is identified, uh, based on gender identity, not sex at birth. I know you have questions. Uh, we'll get to those about school district responses to that. Lastly, on state issues, it's all about resources. Our districts are distressed. We've said a lot about them being down, uh, more than a thousand dollars per kid, roughly a thousand dollars per student. Uh, adjusted for inflation, so we have less buying power by a billion dollars than we had five years ago. Special education is our biggest gap. We see huge differences between the House and Senate right now in terms of the level of invested. Investment in special ed. We hope the Senate prevails there with roughly five hundred million dollar a year additional investment that they are contemplating. The other one is is inflation on materials and supplies. It's another big priority. The Senate appears to be investing quite a bit in that. Uh, the House, uh, perhaps not, or a much less. And so. We definitely know there's some tension there in the legislature. We're going to keep leaning into those big priorities. And as I've said consistently, I also think there's room here to give some levy authority back to families, back to communities. Because the legislature forcibly lowered levies, uh, seven years ago without requirement by the court. The state courts did not require that. They did it. That would, that would go a long ways with some equalization, with some help for property poor communities. That would keep a lot of districts, um, above water, out of what we call binding conditions and without financial risk of insolvency. And finally, uh, the, you know, I'm the state superintendent, uh, I stand alone elected official. I don't have a role in the legislative process formally. I do get to advocate, and I would be remiss if I didn't advocate for the fact that we shouldn't trade off. Uh, investments in schools and public education by slashing the social safety net. So, so to be perfectly transparent, our message to the legislature is invest in schools. Don't hammer the social safety net. Some of the same kids who need those reading supports and math supports need housing. They need food. They need mental health support. So we don't think that's a fair trade-off, which means, uh, we're strongly encouraging the legislature to lean into new revenue. Progressive revenue that balances our tax code and offers more resources. And with that, Katie Payne is going to monitor questions here. Uh, we basically kept it at ten minutes, which is what I wanted. And please ask any question on any of this. We just want to get your questions answered and get on the same page. Katie, take it away.
Thanks, Chris. We've got a few folks wanting to ask questions. First up, we have Philip with K H Q.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I would just like to know, has there been any, um, discussion with your office with the Mead School District? About the letter that they sent out asking for clarification, highlighting that their concern is. That regardless of what they do, they're, they feel they're in danger of losing either federal funding or state funding. Uh, based off of this Title IX, uh, gender and sports policy.
Thank you. So I want to clarify two things. There is this ongoing civil rights review that we were tasked by the legislature to do that's underway. So several districts have been notified that maybe they don't have their civil rights coordinator identified, perhaps training hasn't occurred. Their website maybe may not be updated. There's a lot of that going on. I believe Mead is one of many districts who got a letter from us about that. That has a review process, technical assistance. We help districts get in compliance. We, we have communicated to them and others about that. Separate and apart from that, though, is the question you're raising, which is the Mead School District has asked federal authorities. To come into Washington State and help them essentially balance what they think is a tension between trying to. Meet state law when it comes to gender, uh, specifically versus the executive order that the president put forward. That said, you must only identify, uh, student gender based on sex at birth. They feel they're caught in the middle of that. Um, cognitively, I understand that. Our guidance to all districts, including need, has been follow state law. It's the law. Executive authority is questionable at best legally and certainly is going to get challenged in courts. Um, but they're nervous about that, and, um, I understand that. So Mead's a pretty unique circle. They understand where we are. We've communicated with them, the civil rights investigation, and that's a small word. It's really a review, civil rights review. That definitely has some things that they and many districts have to clean up. Uh, but this larger question on Title IX and gender, it's going to play out in courts undoubtedly, and our message to them has been follow state law.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christian with Creme Two.
Hi there, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you so much for your time. Um, kind of going off of what you just talked about, you know. The, the Mead School District is kind of, like you said, they feel like they're caught in the middle of, you know, trying to adhere not just to state law, but to federal law. So do you believe that there is a middle ground for some of these, uh, different situations? Because of the state-mended policies that local school boards are trying to adhere to, and I'm sure they're not, like you said, the only ones that are in this situation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be pretty clear. I don't think there's a need for a middle ground now because state law is very clear. And these folks have to follow state law, and our laws make super clear how to approach the civil rights protections of transgender youth, um, and our non-discrimination laws. People say it's this middle challenge because of federal law, but it's not federal law. There is no federal law that defines gender. Uh, there is an executive order. There's a president with his political will, his political interest, maybe his personal opinions. Who's put out an executive order that many of us believe go against the idea that. Congress gets to pass laws, especially civil rights laws, and states get to add additional protections beyond that. It's complicated. There's no doubt, and I don't want to dismiss anyone's feelings about feeling caught between those. I don't think there's a fact that you're being caught between a federal law and a state law. That, that would be an inaccurate statement at this point in time. Until the courts clarify, and if the courts ultimately land on a definition of. Gender within the Title IX law, um, then state law and federal law at that point, case law, federal case law would be in conflict. And we'll all get there. We'll all get there and figure out what happens next, but right now it's pretty cut and dry. Districts need to follow state law.
Up next is Claire with the Seattle Times.
Uh, hi Superintendent Reikdahl. Thank you for doing this. Um, I wanted to ask about the, um, layoffs at the Federal Department of Education. That may seem like quite remote from classrooms in Washington. I wonder if you could just speak more specifically to the impact of those layoffs here. What does that really mean for teachers, students, and schools?
Yeah, with the secretary attempting to carry out the president's wishes to de facto destroy, eliminate. The department. Um, they're starting with basically a fifty percent staff cut from what we understand. As I said, there are about seventeen units within that. We work a lot with their civil rights office. So think about the fact that maybe there's a district out there or a community or even a state agency like mine. When they get sideways with federal civil rights laws, that is the backstop. That's the group that can come in and get corrective action. So there's an immediate risk to civil rights if that group is deteriorated too much. In higher ed, and I won't speak for them, but they do a ton of work in higher ed with the office there in charge of student financial aid. And so impacts there could be very immediate if our students can't get financial aid processes done. Delaying access to their aid, delaying access to their, uh, ability to pay for school. So those are two pretty clear ones. There's also a very large office at the U.S. Department of Education. That supports students with disabilities. It is carrying out IDA law. It's, it's, it's the. You know, it's the hammer when necessary and the technical assistance for states to make sure that we're all in compliance with federal laws for students with disabilities. And make sure that our state laws comport with that. Again, if that takes too much of an impact, our ability to get responsive service from them will be, will be directly impacted. By the way, they've already cut out some of these regional offices. There are regions all over the country that offer technical assistance and research as part of kind of an arm of the U.S. Department of Ed. Uh, that was already wiped out, the, the dollars for that, uh, quite a while ago. We've had a long relationship with our partner here. Uh, on that, and so no doubt projects will immediately stop with respect to those regional, uh, centers. So the impacts are already real. They could get exceedingly painful if we can't get responsiveness. And then if Congress were to move forward and actually follow through and defund all of those functions. Even if they keep the department in place, uh, there will be direct impacts to financial aid, direct impacts potentially to funds that come to the states. So again, current U.S. Secretary, she's eliminating staff. I don't think she believes she has the authority to cut the budget. If Congress comes along and does that, you're talking about meals money, uh, through Department of Agriculture. You're talking about special ed funds and what we call Title One funds. These are dollars that go into high poverty communities. Uh, because of the disproportionate impact in those communities, generally focused on reading and math in terms of content areas. So there's a couple phases to all of that.
I'm going to turn now to Elena with the spokesman review.
Thank you, Katie, and thanks, Superintendent, uh, for your time today. Um, I've got a two-part question for you also about the Mead, uh, letter situation. Um, I'm wondering, is the expectation for their school board that they adopt the exact WASDA model policy, like verbatim as it is in WASDA? Um, and then what's at stake, uh, from your enforcement perspective if they don't? If they do something slightly different or if they just throw up their arms and say, we're going to stick with what we've got?
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll take a little risk here to say that, um, I, I don't believe anyone has to. Adopt word for word most model policy recommendations. Generally, the legislature says to the. State School Directors Association, you shall adopt model policy. And then they task school districts, um, with adopting it or something. That meets the legal threshold, but in some cases, I think districts can vary a little bit on those policies. I'll double check and make sure. Generally, my approach is they need policies that are consistent with the law, that meet the minimum threshold of the law. The cool part about WASDA model policy is it's, it's been vetted. It's been vetted through attorneys there. It's been vetted through us. We have partnerships. Sometimes that's vetted through the Attorney General's Office or even legal counsel in the legislature who helps draft the laws. So the WASDA model policy is the safest way for districts to land on compliance. Um, I don't necessarily want to say that they have to be word for word, but they certainly need to meet. Uh, the civil rights protections, um, and make sure there's no discriminatory policy. Clearly, the direction that some of our districts have indicated is they are intent on violating state law because they just happen to agree. With the way they think the president sees the world, and that's going to be a problem legally.
Um, up next, we have Jackie with Como.
Thank you for your time. I'm wondering if you could stand a little bit just on the last question about overall impacts. If these sweeping federal cuts happen to the Department of Ed, you, you touched on money for meals, special ed, and Title One funds. But I'm wondering if you have any idea just yet about potential impacts on K-12 student outcomes, especially at a time when families are wanting to, to boost students' math and reading scores, for example.
Yeah, thank you. Fortunately, we're a state that performs above the national average in the federal benchmarks in reading and math, both in fourth and eighth grade. We saw a nice recovery in fourth grade math as well this last year, so we're, we're a relatively high-performing state. Part of what contributes to that is the fact that there are these federal dollars that are targeted. So, you know, it's not a small amount of money that comes from what we call Title One that goes into high poverty communities. In fact, it's such an important program that our legislature essentially matches it three for one. Um, every, you know, a hundred million dollars the feds pro, put out that program. We have what's called the Learning Assistance Program. You know, that's three hundred million dollars in match that, that funds these programs. So. If there's a good news story here, it's that we're not as dependent on federal sources as other states. We're about seven percent of our budgets here in a state on average. Um, and the big ones are meals, the big one, second big one, special ed, and then, and then these, um, Title One dollars that I'm talking about. Those three are the biggies, and they really are focused on kids who need the most help. More help in reading, uh, kids who need more help with the disability, kids who need more help because they are, um, not able to access food and meals. So it will impact student learning. I don't think the research is abundantly clear on whether it's the federal dollar that makes the difference or the state. Uh, what I will do is show you a screen here, though, of just scale. I want you to see. Um, through a quick little screen share here, all the federal money that each of our districts get as a percentage. There's a little black box and that'll go away for you all, but, um. There's this, um. There's this reality of these federal dollars, and while it's seven percent of school budgets in this state on average, in some states, it's ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty percent. But even in Washington State, we have regions in the Northeast that are much more dependent. The redder you are, the higher the percentage of your dependency on federal dollars, South Central Washington. And then our rural communities out in the Olympic Peninsula. The correlation is high in terms of rural, high poverty, and tribal, because the tribes get such dedicated dollars from the feds. That if that money is impacted, you'll see tribal communities, um, all over the state with even greater impact. Again. Uh, we've got this on our website. We're going to put a link up here for you all because the version that you'll get to see, actually, if you hover over any school district, you can see. The percentage of their budget, uh, this last year that came from federal funds. And so, uh, this is just a static look. I just wanted you, northeast, south central. Olympic Peninsula will have much bigger consequences of federal cuts, but, but pull it up, um, when you get the link, uh, after the call. Hover over your local school district and you'll get a sense. What I do want to be clear about is everyone would take a cut, so green doesn't mean they get more money. It means there are going to be less than seven percent cuts in the green areas. It means there are going to be more than seven percent cuts in the red areas. And again, we just said if the, all the federal money went away, this would be the impact. It, it won't be that severe, but this will give you some sense of scale.
Thank you, and I did put the link in the chat to that. Um, up next, we have Charlotte with Cascadia Daily News.
Hey, thanks for doing this. Um, related to ICE threats, I've been hearing from some local school leaders. That they are concerned that some students aren't showing up to school as consistently because of just the increased presence of ICE in our communities. I understand that there have been no arrests at schools in Washington, but I wonder if you might have any data? I've seen any trends around absenteeism in the last several weeks that could be connected to that.
Thank you. We're going to keep looking at that because we did pull up data here about a week and a half or so ago to see if we could find any initial trends. We were getting reports out of some communities with higher populations of immigrant families. Uh, we wanted to test whether or not it's showing up in the data yet on the attendance side. At that point, it was not. Is either not measurable or not statistically significant, but we're going to keep looking at that just to see if that trend is there. And part of the reason is we want to know, we want to support those districts and understand that, but also. This partnership with the Attorney General's Office is very important. They're looking at each of these executive orders and whether or not they're legal in part by who's harmed and whether there's impact to our state. And this is one that if the data starts to show that students are not attending because of this fear. And remember, there's a financial impact potentially for schools. If students don't show up for long periods of time and they miss account day, our school districts lose out on resources. As we can show the student impacts or the fiscal impacts, we'll share that with the Attorney General's Office and let them consider. Whether or not they want to bring, uh, litigation. So so far, we have not seen statistically significant data, but we'll take another look, and when we see it, we'll definitely be showing it.
Up next, we have Natalie with King Five.
Thanks, Katie, and thanks, Superintendent, for taking the time. Um, I'll ask a local question. I want to know about, uh, what your deciding factor was in the decision to approve. A new rule requiring twenty minutes of seated time for lunch. Um, I know some districts oppose that, say they can't make it work financially. What do you say to that? And the second part of this is, um, why wait until twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty to implement the rule?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That's a great question. So we are adopting a rule in, in our state, consistent with the law. Uh, the flexibilities that we have to tell school districts, you have four or five years to get ready for a period where you need to guarantee twenty minutes of seated lunchtime for every. Elementary school student, K through five is what our rule will say. Number one, it was the research that brought us there. Um, pretty clear that when kids get time to eat, um, especially if you'll put recess before lunch, right? So they play and then they come back. They sit down longer to eat if they have recess after lunch. Well, they. They eat the corn dog as fast as they can. They shovel the vegetables in the compost and they get out to maximize their recess time. So really, it was a research question. What could we do to structure lunch differently? They needed more time. And then the state auditor actually looked at this. They did a performance audit on this. Uh, they, they, they literally sat there with clocks and did all of the great work that they do. In the auditor's office, and their recommendation is to do this to maximize efficiency of taxpayer money. If kids eat their full meals, that's better use of our resources than if they're just shoveling, uh, you know, the equivalent of lots of dollars into garbages and. Compost bins. So those are the reasons the timeline is necessary because with so many more kids eating meals in our state, getting access to breakfast and lunch through school. Those lines are longer in, in, in schools. Sometimes those schools are so overcrowded that they don't have the capacity to put in twenty-minute lunchtimes without having two or three or four lunches. During the time that they're there. Some of them need to physically move into other space. Some of them need to negotiate the possibility that they're going to have lunches in classrooms. Um, there's a lot that goes into this, and many, many districts are not ready for that. So we gave them a really long timeline to get ready. And that'll give us some time to, to ask the legislature for some operating dollars and potentially some capital dollars if really necessary to accommodate that change.
We are going next to Samantha with K A T U News. We are going next to Samantha with K A T U News.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Superintendent. I have a question regarding La Center School District, Washington State. Education officials have determined the district is discriminating against students and families when it comes to their approach to pronouns. So I wanted to ask just on the record, if a child is changing pronouns or name at school, does the state believe they don't need to have a conversation with the parent? And then a follow-up question, what consequences could exist for La Center if they don't follow the state's requirements?
Yeah, we'll start with the first part of your question. Students get to identify as they, as they choose. That's what our non-discrimination policies say. The good news is, making up this number, but 99.9% of all families are having this conversation within their family. That's very, very important. We encourage students, as part of the process of them, if they come to a school and say, I'm changing my name or my pronoun, we say, like, have you talked to your family about this? We encourage that connection. What's different here is that we had a school district who essentially said, we won't ask, we won't report. We refuse when a student has changed their pronoun to recognize that in our system. And we're going to preemptively go out and tell families about that. And that does violate our state law. And it's important for you all to understand both the reality of that for kids where they don't feel safe at home doing that. There may be a reason and it's not our job to put them in harm's way. Secondly, I think we should be careful about how much we ask schools to be the intermediary on these things. There's a lot of student behaviors that I'm sure I, I would have appreciated as a parent. It's not realistic for schools to be, if you will, policing every behavior of every child, every preference of every child, and then calling proactively parents and saying, hey, did you know that I heard there might be a party going on at the old rock quarry? And I heard that your child might be there. Like, where does it stop? That school districts are tasked with being the call to every single thing that seems like it should be a parent-student engagement. So we essentially get ourselves out of that in state law. We didn't make the law, but we're enforcing the law by saying, we're going to follow the law. And the law allows students to protect their identity that way if they choose to. Thankfully, most families are having this conversation in a really good way. But you can't preemptively out kids and you cannot deny them the opportunity to do that. So second part of your question is what ultimately happens? You know, I've been in this job for eight years. We've never had to take a single penny from a school district when they're out of civil rights compliance because we give them technical assistance. We work with them. We get to a really good place. I'm confident we can do that statewide. The non-discrimination law in our state ultimately gives O S P I the authority to withhold funds if a school district is willfully intentionally violating the law and civil rights. So it's a tool we have. It's one I don't expect to use, but you asked the question and ultimately we can withhold funds if a school district refuses to follow the law.
Thank you so much. I, sorry, just before we move on, but how much could you guys withhold?
The law isn't clear on that. Obviously, if we ever go that far, we're only going to try to redirect money, not even permanently withhold it. Our goal is to redirect funds that the district might need to implement a policy, to train their school board or to train their staff. It's really about making sure they use those dollars appropriately. So there is nothing in statute that limits how much. But obviously, reasonable judgment here says do your best never to take a dollar. And if you do, only redirect it to get compliance so that, that, that student rights and educator rights are protected.
Up next, we have Alexandra with K X L Y.
Thank you, Katie and Superintendent Rick Dahl for your time this afternoon. In your press release following Trump's executive order regarding transgender athletes, you stated that you're working closely with the AG's office to understand next steps that need to be taken. Now that it's been about a month since that was put out, I was wondering if you had any clarity on that? If you can maybe elaborate on where things currently stand?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's important to note that we don't give legal guidance to our districts. What we do is we give them education guidance and then we inform them of any legal consequences. And so this idea that we work closely with the Attorney General's Office is to make sure that they have all the information that we have, that in the event that we say, hey, we think something's happening here in violation of our state laws that they're aware and can act. And then we definitely inform our districts about that. At this point, because the Trump administration, neither Department of Ed nor the Justice Department yet, has come into our state and forcibly taken money or forcibly challenged our laws, I think our Attorney General's Office is actually watching other cases. They have been, the feds have been involved in a, in Maine. They went to the state of Maine and said, you're in violation because you have a law that's in conflict with the president's executive order. Again, that doesn't mean state laws in conflict with federal law. It means state laws in conflict with the will or interest of a single president who signed an executive order. We're watching that closely to see if Maine, that Maine has told us they will challenge that in court. So the courts will get involved here. And we're waiting to see if any money actually gets taken away from Maine. So far, there has not been. It's just the threat of it because they want people to voluntarily comply with the president's will. But so far, no money has come out of that state as a result, but we're watching it closely and no doubt so is the Attorney General's Office.
Just if I can ask a quick follow-up on that, when it comes to funding, that was a pretty big concern for the MEED school district that they made clear in their letter to the Department of Education. I was wondering if maybe at least you can speak on the state level. I know the majority of their funds come from state funding. So is that at risk when it comes to like how they, how they end up going about the executive order?
Yeah, this is what's really challenging. So a district that says, we're with the president. We're going that route because we worry about federal money or politically, we agree with the president. There's no evidence yet that the Trump administration is pulling money out of states when, when you're not in compliance with their view of the world because I think they know they don't have the legal authority to do that, short of Congress making those laws. Courts may change our opinion on that. So we have districts who are worried about the feds taking because of a threat that was given to them. But the only actual law is when you willfully violate state law, especially around non-discrimination law, then this office, my office, has the ability to redirect your funds to be in compliance. Or in the rarest of cases, which we haven't had to do in eight years, you can lose state dollars. So if there's, if there's a worry grounded in law about losing resources at this point, we've told our school districts, lean into state law. State law is what you have to follow. You have an Attorney General's Office that if something happens to you from the feds that is out of bounds, we have an Attorney General's Office with the ability to defend and protect our state and our school districts. So the prudent course of action right now is to put the ideology aside and focus on defending state law and following state law. So it's a bit of a political gamble some folks are making. And if they continue to willfully violate the law, and I'm not saying MEED has, I want to be super clear, their resolution said, feds, come in and look at all this. They did not say they were going to willfully violate the law at this point. So we have not opened an investigation yet about that. We're reviewing all of it all the time, but your question is really powerful. What I would say is follow state law, follow state law, and then if you're not sure, follow state law.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go to Jerry with the Washington State Standard.
Thank you. Two questions. First, you wrote to the leaders of the legislature yesterday with some concerns and some issues on where they're at. And you had said in there that if you don't, if they don't make significant investments in special ed and MSOC, there'll be a larger number of school districts in binding conditions, more cuts and so forth. What's the status? How many districts are in binding conditions right now? How many of the, the state watching and taking over?
Yeah, so right now, we had one exit. So they got back to balance and are in better shape. So I don't know if it's five or six, but essentially half a dozen school districts right now are in binding conditions. That doesn't mean they're insolvent. It means that they need to take corrective actions to get their budgets in balance for now. And in subsequent years, we need to see a multi-year confidence that their budgets will be in balance based on their enrollment estimates, their current revenue estimates and their expenditure estimates. So it's five or six right now. There's no takeover per se, but we did get all the way to that final step with the Marysville School District where we were enhanced financial conditions. In that case, we had a special administrator who's active in that district. We're reviewing contract decisions. We're reviewing spending decisions. The level of intervention there was much higher than anywhere else. I'm very happy to report that not only did their voters, of course, last year approved their levy and put them in a better position. They're making some of the tough cuts up there and they're doing it in good partnership. We see a lot more hope in Marysville than we've seen in a long time and appreciate their new leadership. So one got all the way to enhanced financial conditions. Four or five are still in regular binding conditions where they're managing their own decisions. If we don't get significant investments to address inflation and special ed in particular, we publish and it's on our website, you know, a financial risk condition where we look at fund balances and declining fund balance trends and all of that. And we've got a lot of districts that are in very serious jeopardy here. That's not even to say, Jerry, what would happen if large swaths of federal money were cut? Not only would that just be devastating, but our legislature would have to actually come back, I think, and rectify their budget because those federal dollars do get appropriated through the state budget process. And if the feds start cutting a billion dollars out of Washington State, it'll put our legislature's budget out of balance and they'll have to reconcile that. That will hit districts very, very hard, as I showed you earlier. It's very disproportionate depending on where you live.
Second question, kind of ties to many of these issues we've been talking about, but the Parent, the Parental Bill of Rights Initiative, there was a Senate passed a bill intended to clear up confusion. Your office has identified. The House has passed that, has, has passed a bill that goes and does more. Where does that play out in your mind? What do you want to see the final result? The House version, the Senate version? What do you want the final product to be? And what's the risk, do you think, of it showing up on the ballot in November and voters having the last word?
Yeah, that's sort of the question of the day after a nine and a half hour House debate that started at five o'clock yesterday and went into something like two or 2:30 in the morning. So for everybody, let's get super clear, the voters were going to have an opportunity to vote on a Parents' Bill of Rights Initiative. These are popular around the country. There's sometimes template legislation from, you know, political interests that tend to be for the right. Our legislature instead said, no, we're just going to pass it. And that way, if there's problems with it, we can amend it. Well, here we are in that second legislative year where they're amending it. The House has a version, the Senate has a version. They're different. They do some different things. And so to Jerry's question, we want to see something passes that makes very, very clear that parents have clear rights in the state and they're all over the statutes, but let's get them in one place. Let's make sure that they understand their rights, but every right has a limitation. In this case, both federal and state law says there are times where students' medical or education privacy needs to be upheld. I want to see those protections maintained. There are reasons why some students don't have medical disclosure. There's even bigger reasons why there are behavior issues, behavioral health issues that might stem from abuse or violence or sexual assault. These are, these are not everyday things. And so I never want to blow this out of proportion the way it does on social media, but there are reasons these protections are in place. I want to see the legislature restore those, but still make clear the parents' rights that we have. I want the timeline for school districts to respond to parents when they want a calendar or a lesson plan or something to be reasonable. Our districts are overwhelmed right now and expecting them to turn over constant information on a 10-day cycle is not very realistic. So I like elements of both of them. I, I want to be clear where parents have a lot of rights because they've had a lot of rights for a long time in this state. Anything around the student's official public record or school record, parents get access to that, want them to get it clearly and quickly. But there are some protections that, that students need to have. And, and I think the legislature will land on something clearer. The last point that Jerry made here is what if the initiative writers, Mr. Haywood, just spends millions again, puts it right back on the ballot? And we're going to get there when we get there. I suppose there's a possibility that you've got a state statute that was just passed and an initiative out there that's going to be in conflict and we're going to have to figure that out along the way. This stuff doesn't tend to settle easily in our state with such an easily accessible initiative process. But that's why it's there. It's there for people to express their will. Perhaps there's a problem with millionaires putting their own policies in place, but that's for another time.
Okay, I think our last question is coming from Sammy with K U O W.
Hey, Chris, thank you for doing this and thanks for all the information earlier about how all these federal cuts could affect Washington schools at the Department of Ed and the USDA Local Protos to Schools program. I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, but how early would you expect to see fallout here in Washington on those cuts? Like, how soon would we notice these things, these cuts?
We, we've been weighing this question for a while. It's really difficult timing because Congress is sort of trying to push through a continuing resolution. Doesn't appear to have a ton of cuts in it, in, in our space or education space. But then they've got a more permanent budget that they have to get to this summer. Well, our legislature will leave town by then. Our legislature will be done here, you know, in five or six weeks. And at this point, without federal cuts, they're going to assume that revenue in their budget. So we're going to get a budget from our legislature that's going to assume all that revenue. That budget will kick in on July 1st. Everyone's going to expect that that's what they have to deal with. And then here comes Congress that potentially make permanent some of the cuts that the current department is threatening to do on their own. So the timing of this is brutal. It's why we keep saying to districts, be really cautious about engaging in any new discretionary grants from the feds. Like, at least don't add that pain to your plate. Because we'll be doing everything we can just to see what our legislature gives us in state funds, what we think we can secure confidently in federal funds. And then we're going to hold our breath for a while to figure out if the federal government's going to pull that money away this fall or this, this summer or this fall. If it's big enough, the, the legislature will have to come back and react to that. Districts cannot absorb a 7% cut if massive reductions occur in federal spending. Again, I don't think they're going to touch Title I or special ed. I'm worried a whole lot more about meals, even more money coming out of the meals program. And again, even if that's 30 million, 50 million, a hundred million dollars, most of our districts cannot handle their share of that. So it's a great question. I think by this coming school year, by this August or September, we're going to have a lot more visibility on the kind of risk that our districts face from the feds.
Thank you so much. And just one follow-up to with the firings at the Department of Education. How soon would that affect you guys at O S P I schools here in Washington if that succeeds?
Well, I'll be honest with you. It's already affecting us because some of the first stuff they did is they pulled data off their websites. And the states go to that data often to see what their state's doing or to see how they are in comparison. And so we're already losing some visibility on some of the federal data. The personnel cuts will be felt the first time we pick up the phone and call there and no one answers. Or they say, we've got large call volumes or we'll get back to you. This stuff isn't always urgent, but sometimes it is. Sometimes it is. So I'd say those impacts are probably happening immediately. I suspect that's why our Attorney General and 20 other states have filed the suit late last night or early this morning, I think it was early this morning, saying these cuts are de facto destroying the department. Only Congress can do that. And the impacts to our state will likely be felt immediately just due to customer service. The much bigger impact will be if Congress pulls away dollars or if the president and Secretary McMahon believe they have the authority to pull dollars away. Even if it isn't the legal authority, if they actually shut off our grant administration system like we've seen at National Science Foundation or Institute of Health and other places, that will be almost immediately. Like, we will not be able to send money to school districts if we don't get those dollars received from the feds.
Thank you.
Those are all of the questions that we have.
Katie, as a follow-up, I saw a comment here. Could we send folks the letter that we sent to the legislature? We, we've got all of you who signed into this. And so that means I think we have an email for you and we can push that letter out. I'll close up here with a big thank you. These are hard things to respond to quickly in terms of your time, but I respect and appreciate that you've done that. There's a lot going on on the Hill. This has been a really frenetic environment and sometimes piecemeal doesn't really pull all the pieces together. So I appreciate you being here. We'll do it again if the environment seems to be as dynamic as it is. Certainly, if there are big cuts coming from the feds or big implications from the courts, we will undoubtedly pull folks back together so that you can all hear in one place kind of how we're responding to that. But until then, thanks for your time. We'll get you the information. We said we would. Hopefully, you've got the link here for the map that we showed you and reach out to us if you have individual questions. Appreciate you all very much.
Thank you.